It's 7 o'clock. It's Wednesday, June 10th, and this meeting is a continuation of the Urbana City Council meeting from Monday, June 8th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Here.
Holbrook?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Eller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Who?
Here.
And Marlin?
Here.
We're picking up with business where business left off last, last meeting, and that's with the budget presentation coordinated by the finance HR department. So Diane, I think you were going to lead off the first couple of slides. Right, just making sure we're good to go. Okay. Yep. Thank you, everyone. This is a one of the most important actions we take as a city. We are, this is a budget presentation for tonight, just so the public knows there's no action taken on it tonight. This is simply presenting it to the city council. There will be further discussions of the budget next Monday and then a vote on June 22nd. But before we get started on the presentation for the next fiscal year's budget, I wanted to recognize the very hard work and actually prestigious award that was given for the first time to the city of Urbana, and it's the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. What this reflects is a budget document that meets very high standards as a policy document, as a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. And I especially want to recognize the work of Don Ho in the HR Finance Department, as well as Elizabeth Hannan. This is, this is really a big deal for us, and we're very proud of this award. Okay. I'll just, I'll get us started, and then I'll be turning this over to Elizabeth and Carol. As you know, for the past three years, we have been focused and with a concerted effort on building a financial foundation for the future. It's always good to remember where we started three years ago. In the past three years, we've eliminated a $2.5 million structural budget deficit through policies set by the city council and extremely hard work by city employees and a very disciplined approach. We restored public safety pension funding. If you remember, a few years ago, the pension funding was dialed back in order to balance the budget in several years, and that put us on a road to really jeopardizing future city finances, similar to what the state of Illinois has been doing. We, we, we ended that practice. You made the decision, the city council made the decision to re, to reverse it, get us back on a track to adequately fund public safety pensions, and that will take place over a five-year period. It does mean that we're making larger public safety or pension funding payments over the next few years, but it will prevent us from putting a future city council, future city into a perilous position. We rebuilt the city's emergency reserves. These were the funds you need to, basically, it's exactly what it says, to, to use in the case of an emergency, a natural disaster, or in the case of a pandemic, which we hadn't anticipated, but the fact that we have our reserves and they're real money and not money that was kept in there to make it look like we had it, is, puts us in a stronger financial position today than we were three years ago. We had taken out loans to pay our 911 bill. Those are repaid. We also had a very strategic approach to spending reductions through a very thoughtful process. These were very difficult to do, but we, we did them, and that helped us get on a firmer financial foundation. We also had selective revenue increases, food and beverage tax, cannabis tax, which is a new tax, and a couple of other things, a tax on Airbnbs or alternative hotel-type housing. We have increased our tax base. That's a long-term goal, which will relieve the property tax burden on current property owners and will provide an increased source of income for the future. We made many, many attempt, not attempts, we successfully increased efficiency in many ways. A lot of that was going to online services. We examined our services. We examined the way we were doing things, and we made necessary changes. One of the things we don't say anymore around here is, well, we've always done it this way. We realized that can't happen. We reignore, we reorganized several departments and restructured. We moved to, one of the most significant things we did was move to a cloud-based financial system, which is much more secure and much more resilient compared to the, the old system we had, and we're in the process of moving to a cloud-based telephone system. Our, our landline system in the Urbana City building is over 20 years old. It's not supported. And when the pandemic rolled in, we discovered that it could not support conferencing and the other remote working protocols that we needed to do. So we are upgrading or replacing that telephone system, and it will support much more flexible ways of doing business at the city. And this was just, this is just a few of the many, many changes that have been made over the last three years, which put us on a firm financial footing. We also have put a great emphasis on planning for the future, which would be, we are nearing completion on the Stormwater Master Plan. That hadn't been updated since 1980, before computers were actually used at the city. So this is a critically important part of our planning so that we can understand how, how water is moved underground away from your, your streets and sidewalks and basements, and it's, it was long overdue. We completed a citywide pavement assessment. For the first time, we have a condition assessment of every single street in the city. This was done by our downtown business APT technology, and it will provide information for planning for future improvements. It'll really provide the basis for our capital improvement plans in the future. The city facilities master plan programming needs assessment is nearing completion. And this, actually, with the pandemic coming in, this has come at, this couldn't have come at a, a better time, I guess, because it will allow us to make decisions about the city building and our facilities that will reflect the necessity to be much more resilient in the case of things like a pandemic. So, so that is nearing completion as well. Those three documents will be the foundation for our ability to determine how we're going to spend capital resources, what we do first, or what our most important needs are. The comprehensive plan process is officially getting away under July 1st, although the groundwork is being laid now. The last time this was done was in 2005, so really, the work on our current comp plant was done in the early 2000s, almost 20 years ago. Well, a lot has changed in 20 years, and we anticipate this, that this comp plant, we don't anticipate, we know that this comp plan is going to be much more comprehensive, if you will, than our last one. We want a blueprint for how we want our city not only to grow and look in the future, but, but everything that goes into quality of life and, you know, assessing our priorities and then, and then proceeding from there. So it will be a, an umbrella plan that we can refer to in terms of planning our activities for the future. So that's just a few of the major components that have gone into getting us to where we are today. And then this budget is going to reflect that and, and more. So I'll turn this over to Elizabeth.
So just, just a few key takeaways, things that I want you to remember about this budget before we really dive into it. First, first of all, the budget does maintain current services to residents. Second, and I know you're all aware of this, but the COVID pandemic was happening during the time that we were developing the budget, and that changed our financial landscape dramatically. So because of that, in the next year, we're really relying on that strong foundation that the mayor talked about to weather this current situation where we're seeing some dramatic revenue shortfalls. If we had not done all that work over the past three years, I really don't like to think about where we would be, be now. It would, it would have probably required a very immediate and drastic response. We, at this point, we're not able to fully assess the impact because nobody knows how long this is going to go on or when we're really going to begin to see a recovery. So we are planning to return in late summer or fall, probably August or September, to kind of reassess the financial situation. And so we may be making mid-year budget adjustments at that point, depending on what we're seeing. So in terms of the economic and financial outlook, we'll start with some, some general statements. First of all, the University of Illinois is the anchor for our local economy. There's no doubt about that. But that's also one of the reasons why moving to online instruction has had such a big impact on us. The healthcare sector is one of our biggest employers with about 9,600 employees in the county, but education, healthcare, and government together are really kind of the heart of our local economy. So turning to some more specifics. You might have all noticed in the news on Monday that the National Bureau of Economic Research officially now says we have been in a recession since February. We've been talking about that for a year or two, that it's coming. I think it was accelerated definitely by the pandemic, but, but we're there at this point. The University of Illinois publishes a flash index, and that gives a, a big-picture view of what's happening with the state economy. That index actually shows that the state economy is contracting rather than growing. There was a very sharp drop between March and April. In terms of property values, for the 2019 levy was, which was just extended, our property values grew by 2.3%, which is not bad, especially considering our history over the past five to 10 years. Our current unemployment rate in the Champaign-Urbana area is 10.9%. And typically, we have relatively low unemployment rates because, again, we're anchored by the university. That is the highest rate I recall seeing in the 30 years that I've lived in this community, 30-plus years. Again, the city has very little debt. We'll have less than $3 million in outstanding debt at the end of the next fiscal year. That gives them, gives us some flexibility going forward in terms of being able to, to finance things like capital improvements. So I want to review a few revenue adjustments that were an important part of the budget, and these were actually made during the last fiscal year. So the council approved a local cannabis tax of 3%, and that will be effective in July. That should generate on an annual basis about $225,000. It'll be less in fiscal year '21, just because there's a lag, there's going to be a lag time of about three months between the time is, the taxes collected and when we'll receive it. We increased the food and beverage tax by one-half of 1% to 2%, which should generate about $400,000 annually, somewhat less in fiscal year '21, probably because, you know, it's going to take time for business to build back up. And even at this point, you know, restaurants aren't fully open and, open, they're pretty limited in what they can do. Also, we expanded the base for the hotel motel tax to capture revenue from Airbnb and other, what we call facilitators. They had not been required to pay that in the past, and that should increase our revenues by about $50,000 annually. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Carol to do the next few slides.
So we, we, every year when we do this presentation, we talk about the fact that economic development is really the key to our long-term revenue growth, and that's why the efforts that we're about to really start in earnest on the comprehensive plan are so important. We had 84 commercial building permits in this past year with, with a value of $94 million, which is, which is pretty good. And we've been so pleased that even with the onset of the pandemic, that some of our major projects have moved forward, most notably 200 South Vine, which is the 42-town home units that are just north of the city building. And the, it's the first new residential construction downtown in 13 years, and the foundations are being put in as we speak. The Gather project is under construction and is rising nicely, at least on the northern part of the, the lot at the moment, and that's going to be 232 residential units and 31 extended state hotel rooms and some accessory retail space. And then there's also the, the 1007 West University Avenue project that is on the old Nero's Giro site, and that's going to be 76 units with first-floor retail. And, you know, we've gotten some feedback from the development community that there's still a strong interest in residential construction, which is what we're seeing, but the hardest-hit sectors have been retail and hotel. The next slide, please. So I'll cover some of the.
May I, may I interrupt, Carol? I would add the $15 million redevelopment agreement for the Landmark Hotel.
Yes. That wasn't on my slide.
I know.
Well, I'm glad you interrupted me then.
Thank you. Sorry.
So I'll highlight some of the new spending that you'll see in, that, that's in the budget. So we have, we've added $72,000 in recurring costs for a deputy fire chief and a part-time inspector in the fire department. We can talk about that a little bit more if you like, but we've, it, we've really had, we've had a void in the, at the upper end of the fire department leadership structure, and the deputy chief is gonna, that's, that will help to resolve that void. We've added $163,000 in recurring cost in the fire department for overtime. This is intended to reflect, this is what we anticipate, and rather than underbudgeting and then having to find money later, this is what is on par with at least the most recent experience with overtime in the fire department. There's a one-time addition of $59,000 to assist with getting a couple of part-time people to help with police records expungement. As we may have told you in the past, we have a mandate now to expunge juvenile cases and cannabis-related expungements, and that really has gone, that, that requirement has resulted in thousands of expungements that are required, and that's beyond our normal capacity to handle. And then there's some technology projects that have, that have resulted in some recurring costs of $28,000, and then a one-time cost of $41,000. They're all related to increasing our, the security of the network because there is an increasing number of the, you know, I forget what, what do they call that when they hold your website hostage? The, the, when, you know, it, there's just been incursions in, in many cities, and so we're, we're trying to be responsible about getting ahead of, of that a little bit better.
Ransomware.
Thank you. Ransomware. Yes. Thank you. We're also adding a one-time cost of $46,000 and then a recurring cost of $11,500 to move in the direction of license plate recognition software for parking enforcement. This is to add greater efficiency towards parking enforcement and move in, in, in that direction. We've set aside, as you know, we were doing a class and comp study, and so we've set aside a relatively modest amount of money, $25,000, for the highest priority salary adjustments, so the, you know, the, the really biggest disparities that, that come out of that study. It's certainly not going to resolve all of the, all of the disconnects that that study will show us, but it'll be, allow us to take an important few first steps. And then we've also set aside $10,000 for wellness initiatives to be recommended by the benefits committee. And then a few other needs to, to point out. As you know, we, I believe we've talked about this in the past. We, we need to replace the existing ARMS, the records management system for police, and that is still somewhat in flux. And so we will come back with a budget amendment when we, when we know, have a better sense of what that will cost. And there's a collaborative agreement with the partner agencies in the existing ARMS system, and we'll have to bring that intergovernmental agreement back to you. And as the, as the mayor mentioned, we'll also be replacing our old phone system with a, with a hosted system as distinct from having onsite equipment. And right now, we're, we're getting pricing from various vendors, but that, that is something that we're looking forward to because it'll give us more flexibility when it comes to handling the phones. It'll give us centralized numbers. And for the first time, all of the buildings that are in, all of the city buildings, so the city building, the Public Works Building, Fire Station Number Two and Number Three, and the LRC will all be on a single phone system. And then the capital improvement plan, you know, we, we presented this last week, and we will be back next week with the, the ordinance for you all to consider. There's priority projects there that we discussed last week. And I also just want to remind folks that in addition to these, these projects that are going to be receiving funding in FY 2021, which is Ray Street, Farallon Avenue, the western end of Windsor Road and Smith Road in Savannah Green, should you agree with our priorities, we will, we will also be doing the construction in FY 2021 with, with carryover funding of the Lincoln and Springfield project and then Phase Two of the Nevada Series Street Lighting Replacement Projects. So, and as we mentioned the other, last week, this incorporates all the recommendations of these master plans, like the facilities master plan. We still have to incorporate the recommendations of the pavement condition assessment, which we plan to present to you sometime in the future after we've been able to, you know, really dovetail the existing CIP and what we've learned through that very detailed analysis. And then we'll be back to you, as I said, on June 15th. I believe Don has the con now.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a little segue to Don. So as you might imagine, trying to budget in the midst of a pandemic where our revenues were dropping quickly was a little bit challenging. We did miss an error that made its way into the budget book. When we were adding new expenditures, some of the expenditures that were already in the budget were overwritten. And so that has an impact on the general fund budget, and also on the IT fund, actually. But in the general fund, we, our expenditures will actually be about $500,000 higher. So that affects the bottom line and also how we analyze recurring expenditures and fund balance. So I just want you to know that the slides that Don is going to show you now are updated to reflect those changes. And also, when you get the budget ordinance, you'll see those changes listed with all of the revisions as we normally list revisions for you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So what we're seeing here is total revenues of all funds in the city's budget. So total revenues for all funds in fiscal year '21 is $40.45.3 million, which is $5.3 million less than fiscal year '20. It's 69%, you can see here, 69% of the city's revenues are in the general fund, which is a little, about $33.7 million. So before COVID-19, we had a steady growth of revenues, as you can see here, from fiscal year '18 to fiscal year '20. But because of COVID, we're expecting about $2.9 million decrease in general fund revenues in fiscal year '21. And then we have expenditures in all funds. I just want to point out here that expenditure is higher than normal in fiscal year '20 because mostly, mostly because we had a lot of capital spending in fiscal year '20, and also some of that is encumbrances. And total expenditures for all funds in fiscal year '21 is $40.47.2 million. And 60% of that is for personnel. So the total estimated revenues for general fund is fiscal year '21 is about $33.7 million. Like I said before, it's about $2.8 million less than what we expected before, before the pandemic. So you can see here, sales tax and use tax revenue are still the largest piece of the pie, and it's about 30% up to, of general, general fund revenues. And income tax is about 11%. And these three combined account for 41% of general fund revenues. And these three were also the ones that got affected heavily by the pandemic. Property tax is 13%, and it's actually not affected much by COVID because there's usually a delay if property values drop. Usually, it's, there's a delay for that. Okay. And next, I want to talk about where property tax goes in the 2019 levy. I know council members are familiar with this, but we have people watching, watching this. I just want to explain more. So, because some people think that the city takes in a lot of money from property tax, but, but in reality, we only take in about 13% of the total tax bill. The school district is, is the big, the biggest slice of the pie, is about 55% of the tax bill. And the, the city's portion is 13%, but, but we only actually, for, we only get about 3%. And 3% or, and that's about $1.3 million. Majority of the 13% goes to pensions for police and firefighters and the library. So in fiscal year '21, the total expenditure, total general fund expenditure is about $34.7 million. And, and the majority of these expenditures in the general fund is for salaries, and it's about 34% of total expenditures. So a little bit above $25 million here. So, so fiscal year '21, recurring revenue is about $2.2 million above recurring expenditures. Recurring expenditures is, right now, about 94% of recurring revenues. And our current policy is, is that recurring expenditure is not more than 98% of recurring revenue. So we're doing pretty good. When we estimated the amount for recurring revenue, we assumed that it will be a quick recovery after the pandemic. So this year, we have a decline of $2.9 million, but we expect that amount will go back to the original level after this year, after fiscal year '21. go back to the original level after this year, after fiscal year 21. So in March, the city council increased our policy um on minimum fund balance to 20% of recurring expenditures. A sufficient fund balance is very important to have because of unexpected events such as the pandemic that we have, we have experienced so far. So fiscal so fund balance will decrease by eight hundred thousand dollars, and we will be at night nineteen point six percent by the end of fiscal year 21. So we're about point four percent short of our current policy. Finance staff will continue to monitor general fund balance. And and then like and like Elizabeth said, when we return in late summer or fall to discuss our reassessment of the COVID-19 impact on the budget, we will also take another look at fund balance and discuss a strategy to review reserves to achieve that 20% level. And we'll turn this back to this over to Elizabeth.
Okay, so um looking, looking ahead, we still have a high degree of uncertainty at this point about the financial um impact of the pandemic. So in the near term, once we get the budget approved, we'll focus on assessing the full impact that might require budget reductions. And depending on that assessment, that could be significant. For now, we're able to maintain current operations, and again, largely because we have a healthy fund balance. We don't have to do anything without careful consideration. What if we experience a full recovery, we will be in in a very healthy financial condition. In terms of budget review, next week, Celeste Choate will be here to present the library's budget. We have set aside some aside some time also next week to talk about staffing changes in the fire department. That was even though the the net cost is only 72,000 on an annual basis basis, that is one of the most significant changes in this year's budget, some additional discussion of the capital improvement plan. And then on June 22, we will ask you to vote on the budget ordinance and also, as we normally do, a budget amendment for the current fiscal year to reconcile our estimated expenses to the budget. So I think at that point, we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Elizabeth or Dawn? Mary Alice?
Yes, so I was looking at the police budget, and there is mention that the police budget had increased almost two million dollars from fiscal year 19 actually spent. Um, and just based on the back of the envelope calculations, it looks like 65% has to do with personnel and pensions. And then another large percentage for the verf. Is that correct?
So I don't have those numbers in front of me. I wasn't able to log on to the network tonight, but I I did do some research on that. So yeah, most of that is driven by pension funding. So I think the comparison that you're referring to was made between the FY 19 actual and FY 20 budget. So part of it is always that we often don't spend 100% of the budget. So normally, I would compare budget to budget or actual to actual. That's not what we're comparing here. But in that time period, there was one very unusual thing that happened, which is in fiscal year 19, a substantial portion of our property tax revenues was delayed and actually not received until fiscal year 20. And a large part of that is for pensions. And so what happened was it drove down our pension contributions to police pension fund in FY 19, and then it also, at the same time, pushed them much higher in FY 20. So that's the largest part of that difference. That's about 1.2 million. Most of the rest was in personnel expenses, and I, you know, I didn't look at every single line item, but appeared to be kind of the normal sort of things you would see, you know, in terms of fluctuations.
So I know that there is turnover in the police department, you know, every couple, you know, every year, there's new people, there's people who retire and so forth. Do you know what our current staffing level is right now compared to two years ago?
So I'm gonna say my recollection is the only significant staffing change we've had in the last couple of years is the SRO positions that were added just during this current year.
Okay, and then that fund, because I know that the city is reimbursed by the the school board or the school district, rather, and where do those show up in the budget?
Give me one second to open up my budget book. So if you look on page 73 in the budget book, there's a summary of the police department budget there.
Right.
And you and you can see that the last program listed there is the school resource officers. So there's a partial year in FY 20, and then a full year in FY 21. And then if you flip back further through the police department budget on page 79, there's the detail of that budget with line items.
Right, but is that the cost to the, is the city bearing the cost of 262,000 dollars this year, or is that something that's reimbursed by the school district?
Oh, we're, we're being reimbursed by the school district, not exactly for that amount. There were some things that were negotiated in the agreement in terms of, you know, one-time costs and how they would pay for that over time. But yes, in a, in a, in general terms, they're paying for that.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, and then and then Sharice.
When did we hire a statistician in the police department? Is that reflected in this increase that we're talking about, or did that?
I would have to check that for you, and I will do that tomorrow, but it's been a couple of years at least. I don't, I don't think it's impacting the the difference between FY 19 and 20.
Sharice, you had a question?
Yes, um, I know that this is a census year, and I was wondering if if or at all if the census would have any bearing on the budget based on reply returns, so on and so forth.
So it will ultimately have an impact on the budget, but it's not going to happen quickly enough to affect this budget. So there's a considerable lag time between when they collect the data and process it and then provide that to the state and when they adjust the per capita allocation. So I don't expect to see that happen in the FY 21 budget. I would expect to see it in the FY 22 budget, and we have consistently built that into our financial forecast.
Okay, also, um, with the cannabis being made, uh, you know, us giving this cannabis excise tax, my understanding too is that there's something in that code that requires a percentage of the sales tax that we get from cannabis to go toward community issues of some sort is.
Okay, this, this is a, it's, it's complicated. So my recollection is that the state has set aside a certain amount of cannabis revenue for those types of programs in terms of our 3% tax. There's no specific requirement for how we spend that. There is also a a small, relatively small amount of state cannabis tax that is allocated to local government for law enforcement purposes, and there there are specific restrictions on that as well.
Okay, so whatever community monies that are supposed to go toward from from the cannabis sales tax, will that be allocated to the city in a lump sum, or or how would that will that be allocated at all?
So I I'll do some checking, but again, my recollection is that state money. And I am not sure at this point how that's going to get allocated, you know, down across the state.
Okay. And maybe we could have Carol Ammons come in and talk about that. If at all possible.
Jared?
Bill had his hand up before I did.
Bill, go ahead. Bill Brown.
Yeah, I have a few questions on the uh, so back to the police staff and the extra two resource officers, we used to pay for one half of one on our own, right?
Correct.
And so that was just part of the 47 police patrol. So now that one's no longer working in the schools because we're getting reimbursed for that. So I think they've gained a half, basically.
So um my recollection, and I don't think we have anybody from police on tonight, is that basically what happened was half of an officer assigned to the investigations team was was allocated to that purpose. And I don't remember at what time that started. I mean, that happened for some period of time before we actually created the SRO positions.
Okay, and that's gone from 11 to 10.6 or something, so maybe that is part of it.
That that 10.6 is unrelated, so what that is is reallocating a part of one of the investigations positions to use the state funds that are flowing to us that are restricted for drug enforcement and other activities related to cannabis.
And then um, so is the hiring freeze that we have in place, does that apply to the police department?
So um we, and I don't have this handy with me, but basically, we provided some guidelines that outline conditions under which we would make exceptions, but generally, yes, it applies everywhere. But there are some specific conditions, for example, where if if we have a vacancy and we're going to have to backfill, and that's going to cost us more in overtime than filling the position, there's, there's four or five conditions under which we would review, and the mayor could elect to fill a position.
Okay, it just seems that um potentially, I don't know what the numbers show, but I know that accidents is down, driving is down, population isn't out at night because bars are closed. We don't know what the population is going to be in the fall. It seems like if any department is going to have a less demand, it could be the police department, you know, depending on what else is going on out there, but it just seems like with the population down and the amount of traffic down, this would be a good year to let it you know, I think, let some of those vacancies carry over for a while until we see what happens, and then with the discussion on on police funding, see how that progresses, and if there are going to be other options later in the year or next year to shift some of the funding to other types of first responders. Then I think we would be able to, we would be in a good position to just transition without having to reduce the force that way. So that's, I think that would be something I'd, you know, like to hear more about going forward. And uh, also I had a question on the online sales tax. Was that, that was, has that started yet? Was that going to start July 1st? Where actually comes our, the municipal part? I know there's something now where everything gets divided up by population. But wasn't there going to also be a municipal part that comes directly to us, and if so, is that considered home rule tax or use tax or something else?
So that that was happening in multiple steps. So um I think it was called the leveling the playing field act or something in the Illinois legislature. And so I will pull up that fact sheet and share it again. But what was going to happen was there was going to be first a move towards collecting use tax on those sales, which that does get distributed on a per capita basis. And then it was going to move, and I think that begins in July, which we won't see until October. And then I, then we get into the destination-based tax. The issue for us is that Urbana does not really have a lot of retail, and most of these online sales, if they're coming from a, an origin in Illinois. So let's say I order something on Amazon and it comes from a warehouse in, I think it's Crestwood or Crest something up in Chicago that has a big warehouse. Well, then they're going to get the sales tax because the origin is in Illinois. We will only get that sales tax if the origin is outside Illinois, but the destination is in Urbana. So um in the final analysis, that that's going to benefit us. I'm not going to say there's not a benefit, there is, but it's not as big as you might think.
And that would show up in October, you say, somewhere it would start?
I I believe the second stage of the changes was going to begin in July, and we would we would see July sales tax revenues in October. Yeah.
Okay. Then in Public Works, I know there's been a lot of vacancies, and so we didn't spend the full amount that was budgeted. And the the two columns in our budget, just, I know we're going to be looking at this for a little while, so for me to get it clear in my mind, where it says FY 20 budget and FY 20 estimate, those are often the same, it seems like. But it seems obvious in some cases, like the public works, some of the engineering positions where we won't be spending. We've only spent 200 some thousand dollars, and the budget was 500,000. We aren't going to be spending that, and that's in the estimate column. So is that just kind of a bookkeeping thing? You aren't quite sure, you haven't filled that out, or am I reading that wrong, or?
So so that estimate column defaults to the budget. And then if we have a specific reason to think it's going to be different and particularly lower, we'll work that in because then that helps us more accurately predict the fund balance we're going to carry forward to the next year. Carol might be able to help on this, but but with respect to some of the things in Public Works, I think we were unsure whether we might use them to contract for some engineering services or you know, for other assistance that we need to deal with vacancies.
Right. I mean, we could probably give you a better, if you, if you wanted to see a different bottom line, we could give that some additional thought rather than have it just default.
Okay, I mean, it just, in in that one case, I know it would add up to quite a bit, so it could be, I don't know, half a million or a million somewhere in there. So it just seemed like it could make a pretty big difference in the fund balance. The other, my final question, and I'll give up for a while. On the license plate recognition, that was kind of interesting. Is that cost effective or allow us to reduce parking enforcement by a position or anything like that?
So it's, it's a much more efficient way of enforcing, and so I do think that at some point, we would be able to reduce staffing there.
Would that mostly be used for the permit lots, or would that also be used for the mobile meter or both?
Both. It can be used for permits, but we will be able to integrate our mobile meter data with data with the LPR system. And so it can also be used for meter enforcement.
Okay, and then just like for on in Muna, on the, all the on-street parking, you're probably going to usually be able to see the license plate because it's parallel parking, so there they would still have to look for the sticker anyway, I guess. In most cases.
Well, so now we could, we actually have the information on the permits linked with license plates in the system. So they don't actually have to look for the sticker unless perhaps it's one of the temporary permits.
Okay, I was just thinking that in parallel parking, you usually can't see the license plate because there's a car in front or behind it, depending, I guess, how many cars are there.
Correct, and and so, yes, they're still going to be, and they're going to have to get out and walk and look around.
I do have just kind of a nagging concern about privacy and how that, how the license plate recognition is used, can it be used on cars on the street, and how long is the information retained? So if you have any information that would call me about privacy issues, I'd be interested in in hearing a little bit more about that.
Yeah, sure. I I don't know that we'll get that done before the budget's approved, but we can definitely have a conversation about that.
When is that purchase schedule? Is that? When is that purchase schedule? Is that coming up pretty quick or?
It's in the budget for next year, so we don't even have an agreement to do that or an implementation timeline. Sometime next year, but I couldn't tell you exactly when.
Okay, I know a lot of people are using it. UFI uses it. Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay, I believe Jared was next and then Dennis.
Elizabeth, I got two broader questions and then one specific question. One of my broad questions is, what is, with our new take on the comprehensive plan, what is the level of influence that that has on how we see what we do with our budget? Or I know it's going to be developed over time, but how do you foresee it impacting how you forecast and how we think about the budget?
I mean, certainly when we're forecasting and working on the budget, we're looking to any plans that the city has in place to make sure that it's consistent with those plans. So not having an updated comprehensive plan, it's hard for me to be specific, but I think that would be one of the guiding documents that we would be using.
Okay, I'm just asking because I know hopefully in the not too distant future, council is going to be, you know, looking at, as Bill mentioned, funding alternative sources of public safety other than the police department. And I feel like if we're walking down that path and we start really exploring that, that that is going to have to become a big part of our comprehensive plan. I mean, I know it'll entail all those parts and I was just curious as to, you know, when we think about that, what the influence was in the budget. So that's why, that's why I was asking. I'm going to jump to my specific one before I forget because I just wanted to flesh out what Sharice was asking about. The cannabis tax, is there, do we have two revenue sources from cannabis tax or is there just the one?
No, there are actually two.
Okay, so there's the excise tax, right? And then the occupational retailer's tax?
Right, there's our local tax, which is technically a retailer's occupation tax, the 3% tax. But there's also this little piece that under the legislation created a per capita distribution of a percentage of the state revenues to local governments for specific law enforcement purposes. And so-
That's the excise tax?
I think that's what it is. That actually shows up. So all of our funds for police that have restricted purposes show up in a fund in the budget called the Police Special Fund. And each one of them has a separate program so that we can track that.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that in there.
Yeah, so that, any cannabis tax revenue in that fund, that's what that is.
So that, and that comes from the states, not from anything we're collecting?
Right, it's a piece, I want to say it's like, it's some small fraction of a percentage of all the state's cannabis tax revenue that goes into a pot and then gets divvied up based on population.
Well, doesn't the state collect our 3% anyway and digit back out to us later?
Yes, they will do that, just like they collect our state and home role sales tax revenue.
Okay, so this is revenue that doesn't come from our 3%? Or maybe it just gets all from the pool and they dish it back out to us in our 3% and in this other percent?
No, 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 this is not part of our 3%. We should get all of our 3% less. A small percentage, I believe, that they're going to keep as a collection or processing fee, whatever you want to call it. This is completely separate.
Okay. I looked through our ordinances relating to what we passed on our tax and I just, I couldn't find anything about the excise tax coming back from the state other than like being peripherally mentioned. But do you have information on that available to you that you can share with us?
Yeah, so you wouldn't have seen anything because it's not our tax. It's a state tax. It's a distribution from the state and we didn't have to approve anything to receive that. But I can tell you, we're expecting that will be about $36,000 next year. And related to Bill's earlier question, that's, right now we have that paying for a portion of an officer position at Investigations. So I'm not sure what else you-
I'm just, I'm interested in seeing what those rules are about how it gets spent.
Yeah, sure, I can look that up.
That's what I'm interested in seeing.
Yeah, I'll find that.
Okay, I'll save my other one because I know Dennis had a couple. Thanks.
Dennis.
Yes. My question was really about equipment purchases in the fire department. I know that recently we've purchased a really large hook and ladder truck. Are we paying for that over time? What's the expenditure, disbursement on that in our budget? And is there any other large equipment that we expect to see in the near future?
So as you probably know, the fire department has some of the most expensive pieces of equipment in our budget. So that ladder truck that you saw was purchased at a cost of, and this is a little rough, about 1.25 million, I'm going to say. That's just kind of the going rate for that kind of equipment. We also have one engine in this year's budget and one in next year's budget. And an order was placed for those. They were purchased together because we were able to save some money by doing that. And I think the total for those two engines will be a little bit over $1 million.
I know that the fire department has the option to customize its equipment. And we've seen that happen. A couple of years ago, there was another, I don't know if it was a pumper truck or the hose truck or whatever it would be called, was purchased and it had special carrying storage units on the front bumper and a couple of other things that we did. So it seems like that we're coming up to, right now with a period where like several different vehicles are going to be replaced. And I was sort of wondering about the timing and how we could afford that.
So I'm going to say we can afford that because we've planned for it in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund. That's why we do that, why we set aside money annually to replace vehicles in the future so that we don't get to a point where we have a piece of equipment that's reached the end of its life and we're unable to replace it.
Did, I know we do that and I was wondering if part of the expense is going to be through a short-term loan or other kind of financing?
So, no, we don't intend to borrow money to do that. In fact, you might recall in last year's budget process, we had a conversation about VERF funding and we determined that we did not want to use any debt financing. And so I think it was in the winter, I don't remember, maybe February last year, after we looked at the financial forecast, we brought back a new policy which allowed us to do that without using any debt. And so, no, we do not have any plan to issue debt for equipment at this time.
Okay, well, that sounds pretty healthy. Okay, thank you for the answer.
Sorry. Bless you. Bill? Please unmute.
Thanks. I did see, looking at the equipment replacement schedule, schedule for a canine unit. Is that a new dog?
I would have to look at that.
Canine squad with EQ.
Oh. No, that's not a dog, that's a vehicle. So the police vehicle for the canine is specially equipped for that purpose.
Do we have a new dog? I thought our dog didn't work out and you got fired.
I think we don't have anybody from police on here, but that might be a better question for them to answer. I think, I do think there's a plan that we would normally have a canine and therefore we probably need a vehicle that's equipped for that. Whether we have one at the moment, I don't recall.
I think I'd be interested in reconsidering that because now with marijuana legal, seems like there's probably less use for that. I'd be interested in how often it's used and how much time somebody spends, you know, training with the dog. I know they say it's good for tracking. I don't know if it's a particularly good tracking dog. There are private people out there that have good tracking dogs. So I'd be interested in exploring that a little bit to see if it's really necessary.
Sure, I can pass that along.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
So I'm sorry to belabor the point, Elizabeth. I know that you've gone into some detail on the state collection of cannabis tax, but the 3% cannabis tax that our local government put in, do those funds go into the general fund or are they set aside?
In the general fund.
So there's no, that money is not earmarked for anything?
So I wouldn't say that it's earmarked for anything. However, that was part of the discussion after we reviewed the financial forecast and we identified a need to close the gap with revenues. So that was part of the plan to close the gap on the structural deficit. So without that in the general fund, we would have been making budget cuts.
And so that 3% tax, is that, was it, so you had the amount of tax in your projections? And I think it was, was it $225,000 roughly?
$225,000 is the annual amount. This year it will be less, just because we won't get a full 12 months.
But does that include both the state and the local or is it just the local?
No, so when you look in the general fund at the cannabis tax, that's just the local. When you look in the Police Special Fund and there's, I think we have a cannabis excise tax in there, that's the restricted money that comes from the state, two different funds.
So $225 is the amount that we hope to expect on a normal year in which taxes gathered for the local cannabis tax. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. My second question had to do with the half position in Planning Department that we talked about at the beginning of the last fiscal year. There were some concerns about the timing of stuff coming from Plan Commission. And I wanted to know, A, did we ever fill that position? B, has it been rolled into this budget? And C, where do we stand? Because I think there's only been about two cases that came through Plan Commission that required additional staff time.
So I can answer part of that and I may need some help from Carol and the mayor on the other part. So when we put that in the budget last year, it was for one year only. So it's not reflected in this next budget. I believe we did fill it at one point, but I'm not 100% sure about that.
I would be guessing if I said, so I have to check, but I agree with you. I think we did. But I'm guessing, so we'll confirm it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Jared?
The other general question that I had, Elizabeth, and I know you kind of alluded to this earlier. I was, are we expecting that what has happened from this, because we have so much delay on some of these things, to not come back to us until later on in the year when we'll have to like probably take a harder look at what the impact of the pandemic was on our finances? It seems like relative to what we were expecting to hear, not a lot has changed in the budget projections and what we're going to be voting on coming up soon. So I'm just curious what we can expect in the coming months.
So I truly don't know how this is going to play out. You know, if we see a fairly quick recovery, my recommendation would probably be, if we're starting to see a recovery, let's just kind of fill that gap with fund balance and then start to build that up later rather than have to make drastic cuts. But until we update that forecast information, I'm reluctant to be very specific. But I think I have said that we may have to make additional budget cuts mid-year, depending on what that looks like.
Okay, thanks. Just trying to keep that all in context of our police discussions as we move forward with those.
Eric?
Yeah, I would just, I appreciate the uncertainty. One of the big things that I think we don't know, I may not know until late in the summer, is for example, how many international students will come to the university, which is typically a large fraction of the student body. But not only because of the pandemic, but also because of how screwed up frankly, our foreign policy is and how unwelcoming the United States has become. We may take a hit there. So anyway, I just want to say, Elizabeth, and Diane and Carol, that I appreciate the, kind of the wild cards that you have been dealt in this situation.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, well, again, a reminder, we'll continue the budget discussion next Monday with the library and more on the capital improvement plan. And then Beau is scheduled for June 22nd, two weeks from tonight. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Don. Congratulations again on the JFOA award.
Thank you.
Next item we have to go to is unfinished business. There is none. We've done the reports from the Standing Committee on Monday. Reports from any special committees? Officer, staff? Carol, did you want to talk about the public meeting tomorrow night?
Sure, there's a meeting from 4 to 6. It's on Zoom. The information is on the city's website. It's a meeting to discuss any concerns people have about the Vine in Washington reconstruction project that is due to start next week. I think we've handled some of the preliminary questions that people have about access and how to get their trash and recycling picked up during the project. So anybody that's interested, the Zoom information is on the city's website.
Thank you. Under new business, first are a couple of ordinances, both related to emergency orders that I signed related to the COVID. I'll talk about them both. The first is Emergency Order 2004. That's the one that allowed for flexibility in outdoor dining and drinking spaces in the city of Urbana. And within the space of about a week, city staff, it was all hands on deck and we developed policies and plans which allowed a number of restaurants and bars to set up outdoor seating areas. And it's really made a tremendous difference all over downtown and around town. So it was, it was a, it reflected the governor's emergency order and I appreciate all the work that people went to it to do, to get this accomplished. The second one was more recently and that's the Emergency Order 2005, which allowed for the sale of cocktails to go. And again, that reflected what came down from the state. We don't have an ordinance to go and there's no emergency order related to live music, but I do want to remind and thank staff who also put together the plan to allow for live music on weeknights and weekends. So first item of business is Ordinance Number 2020-06-032, Ratification of Emergency Order 2004, which is Temporary Suspension of Certain City of Urbana Ordinances to Allow for Operation of Outdoor Dining and Drinking Spaces. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Is that Eric?
I'll second that.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Mary Alice?
The only piece of discussion I have is that I want to, I think that this- The only piece of discussion I have is that I want to, I think that this process is working really nicely. Originally, when we were talking about the emergency ordinance, we were talking about, you know, when can the mayor make one and what is the responsibility of city councils? I really like the process of us being able to see exactly what's happening for us to basically ratify it. So I just wanted to say that I think this process is working nicely.
Well, I thank the council for, um, putting that forward and also, you know, it provides an historical document and we're, we're keeping track of as much of the, record of, of this experience as we possibly can. And, and I think it's going to be a very important part of the city's history going forward. So thank you for, for your, um, suggestion on that. Um, any other discussion? All right, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. Second emergency, or the second item is ordinance number 2020-06-033, ratification of the emergency order 2005, which provides for sale of cocktails to go. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we pass that ordinance.
Okay, moved by Dennis, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Eric, any discussion?
Um, can I get some clarification on that? For some reason I keep applying that or was there paperwork on that?
It was included in the, uh, packet online. It came out a little later than your paper packet. This is a provision for, um, Class A in our licenses to provide essentially what it says cocktails to go. The state guidelines, uh, specified the types of containers allowed, how they had to be packaged, how it had to be transported, but it was in response to consumers and businesses' requests for, for this.
Well, well, is this an ordinance that could at all? Um, I know during the liquor license, um, talking, we were talking about, uh, if we had the little peddling thing or something, would somebody be able to, if they had to bring their own wine, would they be, if they didn't finish it, would they be able to take it back with them?
No, this doesn't, this isn't related to the, um...
Later, I was wondering if the wording at all would ever, could ever be, um, transferred or something like that.
It's, you know, it's, it's possible, um, these all are relate, are COVID related. So they're, they're emergency orders and they're essentially temporary until these orders are lifted. So we'd have to, we'd have to make them permanent. What we're finding though, is a lot of the innovations that are coming out of, you know, this COVID pandemic period are, are things we may want to keep permanently in our, in our city. And that goes for, um, some of the changes in our, uh, temporary changes in our planning, or, you know, our city code, our zoning code and that sort of thing. So, so that's, that's the other thing about this whole experience is that it forced innovation and creativity, you know, in a compressed amount of time. And, um, there may be very well a whole lot of things we want to keep once the pandemic is over.
Yeah, that's, I, I was just wondering that because we, we talked about cocktails to go and it just, it made me think about, uh, a, a discussion that we were having during the, the liquor code.
Right, at, at this point, there are no pedal buses operating in the city of Urbana.
Well, we can hope.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? All right, moved by Dennis, seconded by, whoops?
Eric.
Eric, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up are mayoral staff appointments, the list is, um, in your packet. Did want to make a couple of notes here. One is, um, compared to last year, several positions, if you've been around the council for a while, you've noticed that this list has been gradually shrinking, which was one of my goals. Um, we've, several of the positions that used to be annual appointments have been moved into civil service, which is really a more appropriate place for them to be. That includes the sustainability and resilience officer, that's Scott Tess in Public Works, two positions in human resource and finance, the administrative services manager and the financial services manager. And in addition, um, what used to be a planning manager in CD will be replaced by a principal planner position and that will be in civil service. There were several, several positions are vacant. The, uh, there are two division chiefs in, uh, the fire department will be vacant as of June 30th and those will be, um, promoted from within and recruitment is underway. And those positions should be appointed no later than July. Uh, we continue to search for public works director and we're reviewing the status of the economic development manager position. And those activities for those positions are going to be managed by the current staff. Let's see. There's a familiar name appearing on the list after a hiatus of a few years and I wanted to highlight that and that is the appointment of Phyllis Clark as city clerk to fill out the remainder of, um, Charlie Smythe's term. Uh, for those who don't know Phyllis, she, Ms. Clark, served as the Urbana city clerk for 24 years. She graduated from the first leadership enhancement and development session through government affairs at the University of Illinois. She's a master municipal clerk, served as a mentor for newly elected and appointed clerks in District Six and she presented sessions on parliamentary procedure, duties of the clerk as it relates to home rule and non-home rule communities. Ms. Clark has worked with the Illinois Municipal League as a clerk representative on the legislative committee, served as District Six Director of Municipal Clerks of Illinois. She also served as president of the Central Illinois Municipal Clerks Organization and president of the Municipal Clerks of Illinois. She was a governor's appointee to serve on the institute training committee, where she served as secretary, treasurer and president of the ITC. And in that capacity, her responsibilities included, um, developing seminars, providing updated legislative information that could have an adverse impact on municipalities. And she developed educational programs for the municipal clerks of Illinois. And these programs help people meet the requirements for designation as either a certified or master municipal clerk. So, um, Phyllis, um, offered to, to fill this position and I gratefully accepted. So I'm pleased to add her name to the list of appointees.
And we have to also mention that she is an incredible cook and does great catering at, at city Christmas parties.
Would be holiday parties and yes, we've missed those, so it would be nice. We're not, she's not, she is not committing to that at this point.
We'll let her go on that one perhaps.
Awesome, uh, on this list is the city's FOIA officer and that's going to be, um, filled by Kurt Borman, who's the assistant city attorney. So is there a motion for approval?
I'd like, uh, to consider that we don't consider this list as, uh, an omnibus list and remove, uh, at least one of these appointments for separate consideration. And that would be, uh, Police Chief Brian Seraphin.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
So basically you're dividing the question?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
That motion carries. So the list you're voting on will be everything except the appointment of Chief Brian Seraphin. Is there a motion?
I, uh, I'll move approval of the list as it currently stands. You know, without Chief Seraphin.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll give that second.
Okay, any discussion?
I did want to just make one, one note if I could, sorry, I'm talking and not asking for recognition.
Um, is this pertinent to this list?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, uh, almost everyone on there is folks we've gotten to know over the past few years and I'm certainly glad to, um, get appointments made for all of these folks, uh, again. But I did just want to point out, uh, not a, uh, necessarily, uh, critique, but just that, uh, the position of the humans relation, human relations officer in being a part-time position, we're making appointment for a person who's, uh, it's a role that I feel deserves a full-time position. And I would like to see in the future, a person who can, uh, really take on the role as a full-time position be appointed to that. I just wanted to make that mention as part of the discussion under consideration.
Any other comments? No.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, thank the people who, whose names aren't on there this year for their service to the city and their departments, um, over the recent years. Wish them luck in the future. Um, I know, uh, I, I trust the department heads and, and the mayor and the city administrator to, uh, make choices and I know they're tough choices, but I wanted to thank everyone who has, uh, put in work for the city over the past few years.
Thank you. Sharice?
Is, um, FOIA officer a new position? Or is that something that's always been around?
It's been around, it's, it's, um, I, as I understand it, we are required to have someone named as a FOIA officer.
Okay, and so, um, is this a part-time position or a full-time position or?
Well, Mr. Borman is one of the assistant city attorneys. So this is, um, basically one of his duties as a full-time position for the city.
Okay.
You just have to, you have to have someone designated in that position.
Okay.
Uh, Dennis?
Yeah, this is, uh, not specifically germane to our current list, but I thought that it would be useful to recognize a recent honor that has been received by our former public works director recently. As, uh, it appeared in the, uh, news gazette last week. Bill Gray was nominated as one of the 10 top public works leaders of the year by the American Public Works Association. So it's quite a big honor for a man who served the community and this, in his department of public works for, I mean, I think it was like, maybe it was 30 years. I don't remember how many years, but it was...
26 years.
26 years. So anyway, I just thought that we, uh, that hasn't been recognized yet, at least, uh, that I'm aware of. And I thought that, uh, we should celebrate that honor, even though he's not on this list currently.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a, uh, motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. And I would ask you to consider the appointment for Police Chief Brian Seraphin. Is there a motion in a second to get that on the floor? Bill Colbrook?
Uh, yeah, thank you ma'am, uh, I just wanted to state for the record that I'm going to recuse myself, um, uh, from regarding the merits of, uh, this approval because of my perceived, uh, conflict of interest.
Okay.
So I think, I guess I'll take the, uh, the position of, uh, placing, um, Chief Seraphin's name into nomination as a future chief for this coming year.
A second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Sharice. Is there a discussion? Jared?
Um, before I, uh, talk about some of the reasons why I have the decision that I made, I just wanted to let council know because we're in a, uh, particular time and unfortunately with the technology being the way that it is, uh, someone shared with me on the other screen that I'm looking over here, protests that is happening outside of the city building right now. And there are, looks like about 40 or 50 people who have blocked the road in front of the city, the, uh, city building who are protesting the very appointment we are considering tonight. So I just wanted council to know that that's going on if you guys were not aware that that is going on. Because we're not there to actually hear it or see it happening, being at home. Uh, just in, in some, uh, I know that this is a, obviously a controversial decision in a controversial time and, uh, I understand the reasons why folks are going to make the decisions that they're going to make. And, you know, if it is the will of the council to, uh, bring Chief Seraphin forward for another year to be continued. And just for any of the public who are listening, if you're not aware, uh, the mayor does have the power to remove an appointment if, uh, the mayor deems it necessary and the appointee to be unfit for, uh, what's in the best interest of the municipal government and the government governing body. So please understand that, uh, just because if council does pass, uh, this vote and Seraphin is in for a year, that doesn't necessarily mean that he's guaranteed to be in for a year. So I just want public to be aware of that as well. Um, so anyway, everybody, uh, has their reasons that they're going to be doing that, so I thought I would just, uh, state mine and that, you know, uh, I feel like Chief Seraphin is not, uh, risen to the occasion in, in this time. Uh, we haven't heard responses that I feel like have been appropriate to, uh, the nature of what's gone on, both in our police department and in, uh, the world, the larger world. And I just, I can't see how, without hearing the words from his mouth, uh, in public about how he is going to address these things going forward, that at this time it would be appropriate, uh, to move forward with him. If it is the will of the council though, I will of course work with, uh, Chief Seraphin to do whatever it is that we can do to, uh, get the thing, get the ball rolling in the right direction. I like to hear what other council members have to say, uh, on the issue as well. That's all for now, thanks.
Uh, Sharice?
Um, yes, I, I just wanted to say I, I had the, um, opportunity to watch some of the, um, community coalition meeting this afternoon. And Bryant spoke very plainly about, about his, uh, willingness and, and, uh, readiness to, um, work with any, with all community organizations regarding what, what we're facing right now, uh, after George Floyd and also, um, regarding, uh, Aliyah Lewis. But I, I do think that he's, he's, um, he may be a, a bit reticent as far as, uh, uh, how it is presented, because I don't think he wants to present anything half-assed, so to speak. I think he's, he's trying to get all his ducks in a row and he's also trying to talk to other community organizations to see what the, uh, what the, um, this is what I kind of got from watching this today. Finding the way forward and, but he's, he's willing to participate in whatever needs to be done in doing that. And so, um, I've always found it easy to talk to Bryant very plainly and, uh, whether we agreed or disagreed. And I've always found him open to suggestion. And, um, going forward, we need some type of, we need a, a, a leadership role to, um, to move and, and help patrol officers buy into whatever it is that we will be, um, however, we'll, we will be doing new trainings and reforms and so on and so forth. And, uh, Bryant seems to be able to, to do that, so that's all I want to say.
Dennis?
Hey, thanks. Um, I think it's, uh, I think that the community has expressed... I think it's, I think that the community has expressed its sincere concern about, you know, the police chief. We certainly have heard quite, from quite a few people that they would like to see this postponed or denied. But my philosophy is a little different. I think that if we're going to experience real healing in this community, that it's imperative to have the police chief onboard and experiencing the entire dialogue and process and be part of the process for the transformation. This is going to be an educational experience for all of us. The community is going to have an opportunity to interact and speak and help direct the direction that we might be taking to change policy and procedures in the department. And we need to have the officers ready and onboard to accept and perhaps even to suggest the directions that, that policy can be effectively recreated. And we need to have them led by a person who they respect and who is also willing and flexible enough to receive and hear the input from the community. And I don't think that, that there is going to be any doubt that changes occur here in Urbana, because we're seeing also on the national level, change and new procedures and policies being suggested and promoted by the major political parties of our country and Congress. And the discussion is not only nationwide, but it's even worldwide. Where I've also read in the News Gazette and other places that even in France, they are re-examining the use of the chokehold in subduing a subject. So I think this is a transformative time. And I think that our police chief is a competent, wise, wise individual. And it's imperative that we bring him along in this change. So I know there's a lot of question about his being the right person to do it. But I think that if we, it would even be better for him to be part of the process than to exclude him. And because without the education, the leading in the transformation as an individual, we're really not going to achieve the goals that people have asked us to achieve.
Eric, or Eric and then Mary Alice?
So one of the things that I think is really important about this is that the very strong voices who spoke on behalf of continuing Chief Seraphin were people who had worked with him and worked with the police department in community outreach. I was especially moved and impressed by the testimony from the Cunningham Children's Home about the partnership that they had with Urbana Police Department. The other thing that we should remember is the big issue, a big issue that we had a few years ago was traffic stop racial disparities. And those actually, in case nobody has noticed it, have gone away. That, and this is largely due to two things, I think, in terms of Chief Seraphin's leadership. That is partly because he readjusted patrolling patterns to make them fairer in that respect. And he really supported implicit bias training for his officers. He has, in fact, an extremely good record on racial justice as well as other justice issues. I think it would be a terrible blow to our community not to reappoint him. And so I will certainly, I will certainly vote to support his, his reappointment.
Any other comments? Mary Alice?
So I, I had an opportunity to really think about this. So I just wanted to kind of throw out some thoughts in my consideration of the reappointment at this time. So like all of us have talked about, I really want to see long-lasting changes in the way the police force interacts with the community. Key to facilitating these changes is retooling the existing citizen review board and comprehensive review of police policies. These changes won't be easy. They won't be fast to accomplish. But the truth of the matter is, we need the community and the police department working together. Voting for a non-reappointment would cause, in my opinion, a vacuum in leadership. And it's much harder to implement changes, systematic changes, which is what we need right now. As Jared mentioned, the appointments are slated for vote tonight or at will. And that basically means that the appointments are not guaranteed. So this is not, you know, one year in the, in the system. And, you know, I challenge the police department. If I feel really not making systematic changes in our police department, I'm really going to reexamine my support for leadership. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the 10 shared policing principles, my brother's Keeper Alliance. And, you know, originally, when I was thinking about this, I was going to just state them. But ACLU and NAACP, last Monday night's meeting, did a really eloquent and nice statement. So I, I won't go over those to more people. But I just wanted to say publicly that I support both of those. I know a lot of our city council members support them. And I also want to say that I've heard, I was at the Community Coalition Zoom meeting today. And, and some of the comments in the chat were talking about change, talking about action, not about talk. So I just kind of wanted to offer a challenge to my fellow city council members that I would really like to see every single committee of the whole meeting, starting in July, one discussion item or one action item that we can do to address this right now. So that's the direction I'd like for us to see. Thank you.
Anyone else want to make a comment? Sharice?
I, I forgot to say this originally too, is that when we came out of the meeting Monday, I checked, rechecked my email. And someone had sent an email where they had spoken earlier in the evening during public input. And they said that they had listened to what you said about Bryant Seraphin and that they felt compelled to do more research about him. And I suppose during the meeting, the rest of the meeting, that's what they did. And she came back and said that, I go back on what I said before. I will support his reappointment. And I would trust that the city council and the mayor are confident in his, in his, what he, what, what the mayor said. She just basically, you know, went by your words and, and said that she, you know, she changed her mind about her, her not supporting his reappointment. And I think that that's significant in the sense that this is a person, you know, I've heard her make comments before. And she's been very adamant about certain things. But for her to have an open mind and to be able to say, you know, after, after looking at some of the other things about Bryant Seraphin, I have to go back and say, no, I can support his reappointment. And I think that that's also a step in the, in a, in the direction of compromise, which is something that we all need to do and think about. So I just wanted to make that statement as well.
Dennis?
I just want to assure the, the community that the city council is already thinking very seriously about the first series of discussions that we can have. And I'll let, perhaps if Mary, Mary Alice wants to make a comment or not, I don't know. But I think they're going to, you're going to see that we're taking this issue of fairness in policing extremely seriously.
Jared had his hand up, then Bill, and then Mary Alice, if you want to chime in.
I just only feel like it's fair to bring up, since everyone's bringing up letters in support of the chief, that there were over 140 that we received in a 48-hour period that were not in support of his appointments. It's very easy to pick up the few. And certainly, many of us are fond of Preston James. And he had a compelling letter to write, but he doesn't live in Urbana anymore. So, you know, he's not part of our constituency. I don't know why we needed to consider him, other than that he worked with the chief before. But, you know, you, you pick out the ones you like because it feeds, feeds that. And, but we saw an overwhelming, overwhelming public outcry that is not doing it. And people are protesting literally right now in front of the city building about it. So I just want you guys, you know, it's just fair to say, if you want to say there are supporters, there are a lot of people who don't and a lot of people who don't see that. And every one of us has gotten letters from people in our respective boards repeating the same with very few letters of support. I thought, I think I only counted five in support after that, after that total and over 140, I guess. And not just of the like generic kind. So just wanted to put that out there.
Bill Brown?
Yeah, I, I know there was a lot of organized opposition to the reappointment. And I think the thing people objected to most was his presentation of the case at council about a month ago, I guess it was. I think clearly it's shocking to a lot of people to see the force that police use when they're making an arrest. And most of us, I think, believe that could have been done a lot better. And I think a lot of the community members, if not all, would like there to be less force used in situations like that. So I understand that concern. His job was actually to evaluate the policies and to see if the policies were followed. These were policies that he inherited and has been working with for the last couple of years since he's been acting chief and chief. He seems willing to, he definitely is willing to take a look at those and make changes. He's talked about that. He's willing to take some extra steps in, in reevaluating the CPRB. The Use of Force Committee has been accepting and, and for, of the third-party review. So I've always had a good relationship with him. He's been easily approachable. He's talked to me after council meetings, before council meetings. You know, important policing issues like the disparity in traffic stops and how that, how that occurs and how it can be reduced. So I feel confident in reappointing him. I understand people's concerns. I will say that letters don't tell the whole story. It's a lot harder now with the COVID to actually go out and talk to people. One of my main places where I would see people is the farmer's market. And I've only been once and it's hard to talk through the mask. Half the time, you don't even recognize people because their hair is long and they got a mask now. There aren't as many people there. So it's harder to randomly run into people. But I do go out for a walk almost every night and talk to people in the neighborhood. And there's still some social connections that I use to get trusted opinions from people who have lived in the community a long time. And I value those a lot more than I value 10 letters that were sent through a forum that have factual errors and you can tell they didn't watch the videos. I know a lot of people did and they have valid concerns, but a lot of people didn't. So I'll just make that clear. So I'm going to be voting yes. Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Percy? Percy?
Unmute, please.
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Keller?
No.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Before we move on, I did want to note that the, we have prepared a list of FAQs for the police policies and procedures. We've been getting a lot of, you all have been getting a lot of questions about specific practices in the Urbana Police Department. So there's a brand-new FAQ page in the city's website. And I can send you the link tomorrow, so you'll have that to supply the constituents. We basically compiled the most frequently asked questions that we were getting. And I think you'll find it very useful. Next up are the appointments to boards and commissions. And we have a list and I'm going to read them out. In general, my, my, I would like to give a sincere thank you to the residents who volunteer to serve on our, I think, 25 or 26 different boards and commissions. We have to keep about 165 seats filled with volunteers. So it's a continuous process. But that, but these are the people who advise the city council, who put in tremendous amount of work for everything from the Sustainability Commission to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, the Plan Commission. I mean, it's, it's, the city really wouldn't function like it does without the, the service of the volunteers of our boards and commissions. I know there's been an interest in the Civilian Police Review Board. And as you mentioned, we are going to be examining that and making revisions in the process there. But my, my nominee to the CPRB tonight is Patrice Pelmore. She's a long-term resident of Urbana. She works as a claims specialist with the Social Security Administration. And she's a home interventionist with the Family Advocacy in Champaign County. She has served on both the Champagne and the Urbana Human Relations Commission. She has worked, experienced working with many different groups. And in her application, one of the things she said is she wants to give a voice to those who feel that they don't have one. She's a licensed social worker, a certified sexual assault crisis interventionist. And she has a graduate certificate in public administration. And she's looking forward to service on this board. And I'm very proud to place her name in nomination. Coming up for reappointment is the Bill Brown to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. We have a city council member serving on BPAC and Bill is it. Also to BPAC is Cynthia Hoyle and Cara Dudek. To the Community Development Commission is Abdul Hakim Salam. To the Plan Commission is Dustin Alred. To the, and also to the Plan Commission is Jen Shiu. Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals, David Seiler. Tree Commission, Marshall Bellville. Zoning Board of Appeals, Matt Cho, Nancy Upman, and Harvey Welch. Is there a motion for approval?
Again, I'll make the motion that we approve these appointments for boards and commissions made by the mayor.
I'm going to second it because I don't think Bill Brown can second his own motion.
He's going to prove himself, actually. Maybe not.
I should divide the question and vote no on myself.
Going, going, gone. All right. Is there any discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. I need to confirm that we do not need to go into closed session. Is that correct? Carol?
Yes, we're going to do that, we're going to handle the other matter next week.
Okay. Well, that takes care of the business before us tonight. And with no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.